Welcome everybody out to County Council. We will start by opening Councilmember Patrick Muse.
Everyone needs to turn their microphones on, sorry about that.
Thank you, I will go ahead and I'll lead us in a pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, at this time we are grateful we can gather here to conduct the business of Cache County. We thank thee for the bounteous blessings which we've received, for the moisture which we've received, and for being blessed to live in this beautiful valley. We ask that we have thy guidance this evening as we try to discuss the matters before us. Please help us to be calm and collected and kind in our efforts. We ask that you please illuminate our minds with what we need to discuss and help guide and direct us as we do what's in the best interest for the citizens of this county. This we pray in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, we approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We'll come to that one. And how about the minutes from the previous meeting of July 25th?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, we approve the minutes from July 25th and August 1st. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, report from the county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past two years, I've spoken many times about the Cache Valley Way. And I usually speak of it in the context of how Cache Valley residents so readily step up to help others. That's my favorite part about the Cache Valley Way of doing things. But another thing I like about the way people do things here in Cache Valley is their attitude when it comes to conflict and their attitude when someone is accused. I love the way people here are patient, how they listen, how they aren't too quick to judge, how they are careful not to judge unfairly, how they try to see the best in others, how they try to assume pure motives for people's actions, or at least try not to assume negative motives. I'm concerned about how some things have been handled within our organization in the recent past. I'm concerned that things haven't been done in the Cache Valley Way. I'm concerned about justice, fairness, and truth. There are some items being proposed tonight that would enact significant changes. There may be merit to the intent behind those changes. I support our efforts to keep our public safe and to keep their money safe. I've always said that public safety is my number one priority and that our stewardship of the public's money is second only to public safety. I am also committed to improving the way we do things in this organization. That is one of the key reasons why I ran for this office, to be able to improve and professionalize the way the county operates. I have concerns with the proposals that are before the council tonight. However, the greatest flaw in relation to these proposals is the way they were developed. A big red flag to me in how these proposals were drafted is the fact that they were developed in secret. Why is it that the executive branch of this government was not included in discussions about these changes that are being proposed to the executive branch? Why was the public not made aware of such significant changes more than 24 hours in advance? Why would the chair email me at 5:30 last night and tell me that quote, "Every member of the council has been briefed in great detail on these changes and all three items will be voted on at tomorrow's council meeting," end quote? It seems troubling to me that it would be implied that decisions would have already been made about something that is clearly the public's business, which should be deliberated in public. If that is not a violation of the Open and Public Meetings Act, it is at least a violation of the spirit of the act. My request to the council is that you carefully consider the direction, momentum, and intent related to the proposals before you. My request is that the council not act rashly, but that you provide time for careful consideration and public scrutiny. Very few members of the public have had a chance to review your proposed changes or even know they exist. Something else I really like about the way people do things in Cache Valley is the respect they have for the dignity of others. We have an exceptional responsibility as elected officials to protect the dignity of our team members, including current and past employees and elected officials. This is one of the reasons why we keep personnel matters private. I am concerned with the way personnel information has been publicized recently, especially considering that it appears to have been done in an effort to push a certain political initiative. I am particularly concerned about the way unfair, incorrect, and unwarranted criticism has been levied against the previous county executive, the current finance director, and our HR director. It is unfair, unprofessional, and unkind to publicize the type of information that was sent to the news media last night, especially considering that the report is of questionable veracity. I understand that there were some practices in the county attorney's office that people don't agree with, some that may have been illegal and some that were in poor judgment. But I have seen no evidence that the VAWA grant funding in question was misused in any way, nor have the state auditors asserted that any such misuse occurred. The practices they do criticize were discontinued years ago. The UOVC calls for us to propose improvements to our internal controls by September 9th. They don't intend for us to implement them by then, only to propose them. I intend to do that. I have spoken with them about meeting, and that meeting is being scheduled. I understand that some people have feelings of anger, frustration, and betrayal at how some past practices were carried out in the attorney's office. But we should be careful to place blame where it belongs and to not look for scapegoats as an outlet for our negative emotions. In addition to that, we should remember that we are a nation of law and order, of due process, and of innocence until proven guilty. Some of the past practices of the county attorney's office in question were longstanding practices that appear to have continued for a decade or more. Those practices were implemented while the county had the very form of financial management that is being proposed tonight, and those practices were ended under the current form of government. To blame the system that ended the practices and to suggest that re-implementing the old system that fostered their creation seems like a misguided and misunderstood attempt at a solution. I agree that we can do better. We have been doing better, and I am committed to working with the council to develop improved processes for our county governments. But the only way we will successfully accomplish that is if we work together. There are serious challenges to doing that in the current environment. I suggest we start by setting a healthy and strong foundation of collaboration between our branches and then proceeding forward to improve things together. Thank you very much for the time this evening, that concludes my report.
No appointments, financial reports, or other pertinent business?
No, thank you.
Okay. We have no items of special interest, department, or committee reports. I will entertain a motion, well, let's see. Guess we can go ahead and set the public hearings, can't we? We don't have to wait till 5:30 for those, do we, on setting them?
I wouldn't think so.
So let's go ahead and set the four public hearings. Yeah, I'll entertain motions for them.
Mr. Chair, I'll put forth a motion that we set a public hearing for August 22nd for Project 2023 COG Project at 10600 North near Richmond, the COG Project at 1000 South near Mendon, Ordinance 2023-30, and Ordinance Resolution 2023-11.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, we set the public hearings for the 2023 COG Project of 10600 North Richmond and the COG Project of 1000 South near Mendon for August 22nd, and for the public hearing on Ordinance 2023-30 and 2023-11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they will be set. Let's, we're not quite at 5:30 yet for those two public hearings. Go ahead and we, let's talk about our pending action, which we've already started the last time that was put to this particular meeting. Stephen, would you come and share something? This is about the accessory apartments, the detached and the attached, as we've talked about them.
Yeah.
We could probably do that in 20 minutes, couldn't we?
Hopefully.
Go ahead.
Okay. So it got to me a little bit quicker than I was anticipating. So let me just pull up a couple items. So we just have a couple updates from the last meeting. There were a couple questions that were asked by the county council. The first one was about what processes we'd have to follow to record against a property. So if a property created an ADU, what type of deed restrictions could we place on that property? And so if you look under Utah Law, so this is the section within LEDMA that talks about internal accessory dwelling units. And within this section itself, it's a little bit hard to read on the screen. I can maybe see if I can, it talks about that process. And so up, up a little bit higher in the code, it states that you can make that as a requirement to record that, or to record a restriction. But under this section here, under 6A and 6B, it says, "A county that issues on or after October 1st, 2021, a permit or license to an owner of a primary dwelling to rent an internal dwelling unit or building permit to an owner of a primary dwelling who create an internal accessory dwelling unit may record a notice in the office of the recorder of the county in which the primary dwelling is located." And then it says, "This notice described in the section above shall include a description of the primary dwelling, a statement of the primary dwelling contains an internal dwelling unit, and a statement that the internal accessory dwelling unit may only be used in accordance with the county's land use regulations." And so with that, we already had a section in the proposed ordinance that talked a little bit about this, but we did some updates. Here, we'll zoom in to make it a little bit easier to read on the screen. And this should have been in the version that was in your packet. And so under Section E, we have neither the primary dwelling nor the ADU may be sold or conveyed separately, and no additional parcel or lot may be created for an ADU. Prior to receiving a zoning clearance approval for an ADU, the owner must record against the deed restriction to the subject property at County ADU acknowledgment form as deed restriction running in favor of the county limiting occupancy of either the principal dwelling, let me see if I have, there we go, principal dwelling unit or the ADU to the property, owner of the property. This recorded notice shall contain the following, a description of the primary dwelling, two, a statement that the primary dwelling contains an ADU, three, a statement that the ADU may only be used in accordance with provisions of this chapter and other county ordinances, and four, this language and format of this notice shall be drafted by the county attorney. And so essentially, what we wanted to do is just ensure by state law, if we're going to record a notice, we have to contain those three provisions. And so we wanted to ensure that within the draft ordinance that we had those provisions for the county to consider. One issue I actually just noticed, that within this section, we have two conflicting items that I probably should have caught earlier. We have, one, the owner must record against the deed to subject property. This is prior to receiving a zoning clearance. And below, we have that this notice shall be required to be recorded before issuing a certificate of occupancy for the ADU. So we'll just have to, we can probably just remove that last line and just keep the original code verbiage that we had. The other item that was asked about is what our ability was to require licensing. And so we don't have to require them to be licensed, but state law does allow for us to require one. So under the code, state code, it says, "A county may require the owner of a primary dwelling to obtain a permit or license for renting an internal accessory dwelling unit." That's not in the code, we didn't propose that in the draft code, but within state law, we clearly have the authority to do that if that is something that we'd like to do. Typically, that takes the form through a business license. That, that's how most counties and municipalities fulfill that requirement if they would like to do that. So other than that, we don't have any other updates from our discussion at the last meeting, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Our recommendation still hasn't changed, that we would recommend not allowing for detached at this time, and then also restricting the short term, or also restricting short-term rentals from within ADUs until we do maybe more comprehensive short-term rental policy.
So wherein your paperwork are you?
Yeah, why is it crossed out?
Delineating the detached, because I'm on page...
So there should have been two that were uploaded, let me...
You should read down here, it says detached ADU that is detached from the primary dwelling unit is only permitted in A-10 zones. And if the unit complies with the following standards, I'm just wondering,
let me...
if we've got that verbiage in there, if we're not going to go that way right now.
So the planning commission recommended, let me just pull up the one that has...
Because it still has all the information about requirements for detached.
Yes.
We just want to delete that.
Yes, so let me, I apologize that that one wasn't. So the version, or the second version that we talked about at the last meeting takes out the detached language and just has this language that's up on the screen. It says, "Not allowed detached ADU, an ADU that is detached from the primary dwelling unit is not allowed."
So is that in our packet?
That's not in your packet, but I have the ordinance, I have that one here.
That's in the new ordinance that you have with the amendments, huh?
And does it add back in the restriction on short-term rentals?
No, it does not. That would be our recommendation, but that was not the, actually, the, yes, it does, that version does have that. Sorry, I forgot we made that change. So it would say, "Short-term rentals prohibited. The accessory dwelling unit or a primary dwelling unit must be rented for 30 consecutive days or longer by the same occupant." And state law defines a short-term rental by less than 30 days.
Okay. Rentals are not going to be 31 days.
I'm really not comfortable about moving ahead with this until we have a clean copy about what we're approving.
Which one are you referring?
Well, if you've got a clean one there, I'd like to.
I have the one that does not allow detached. So the one in your packet would allow detached.
And then we talked about removing that last sentence and the...
Correct, the one that says this notice shall be recorded, or required to be recorded before issuing a certificate of occupancy, we just strike that.
I can upload it to your packets right now.
Okay.
So we wait till our packet shows up, that'll come up now?
You have to go out and then come back in.
No.
Was there any other questions about the ordinance while that was being uploaded?
I don't have any, anyone else?
No.
No.
I agree with those changes, that the short-term rentals are not allowed and that the external ADUs we're not going to add in at this time.
Okay, it should be there. It's the final item in your packet, just Ordinance 2023-25 ADU amendments. PC recommendation, no detached.
Yep, it showed up. 2023 dash...
So if you pass this one, you'll have to make, you have to make a motion to amend. 2023-25.
How does that look? No one, you see it?
I'm still going through it.
See the changes?
Hey, it's the same thing as what I got, isn't it? Strike down?
Not allowed detached ADUs. And...
What does it say that?
What page are we looking at for sure?
On page four, if you look on the top of page four.
Thank you.
Short-term rentals are prohibited. And no shipping containers. Okay.
I'm working on it.
Good.
So the only difference is...
So there should be two differences. One is in the 1120, one B, and then also in two, I think it's C. Yep, 2C.
So how do we need to make that a motion, Micah?
So you would make an amendment, motion to amend Ordinance 2023-25, 1120 subsection 1B? And that would, I would do it individual motions. Amended to read, to, to read.
Okay, so we will, let's entertain a motion on, let's see. On Ordinance 2023-25 for the 1120 and B. Short-term rentals are prohibited. Any, I'll entertain a motion on that. To accept that as a change, right?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, okay.
I'm sorry, Chair, Mr. Chair, what, did they use any word?
On, we have just amended, we have moved the, mend the 2023-25 on, it says 1120 accessory dwelling units on 1B to now state short-term rentals prohibited. The accessory dwelling unit, can't you?
I found it, yeah, thank you.
You're amending it to...
So where is up there?
Okay, short-term.
Okay, all those in favor of amending that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go to the next change that we definitely had, and that was on not allowing, that's on...
2C.
On 2C, is it?
Yep.
Not allowed detached ADUs. An ADU that is detached from the primary dwelling unit is not allowed. I'll entertain a motion there.
So moved.
There, second?
Aye.
Moved and seconded, that we add, that we amend this ordinance to state under, that it not allowed detached ADUs, and ADU that is detached from the primary dwelling unit is not allowed. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've stated it before and I'll just reiterate, I know that they're happening, and if we don't allow them, we're willing, we're burying our head in the sand. And we're not having any code that is going to be met, we're just, it's just happening. And so I think that by not allowing it, we're, it's still going to happen. So that's just my, why I am going to be dissenting on that.
Okay.
They're not held to any standard, but they will still be happening.
Well, if this passes, then it, then they are in violation.
Yeah.
So, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Can we make one more change? I'm sorry for interrupting.
All those in favor say aye on that?
Aye.
Any opposed?
They haven't made that.
Okay, we have, it is not unanimous, we have two, four, five ayes and one nay. Okay? Any other additions in there? We may, any amendments that we will make to this, any others?
Sorry, I got ahead of myself, just the removing that last sentence from Section 1E.
What does that say again?
Just removing that last sentence from 1E. This notice shall be required to be recorded before issuing a certificate of occupancy. It's covered in the section above, and that got carried over from our draft, so.
Okay.
I'm not seeing that again.
It's in the highlighted part.
Is it green?
It's yellow.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
On page eight, three.
Okay, got it.
Move to, is there a motion to allow that change?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, we allow that change, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, let's look at the whole...
Second, you have a second on that one.
Oh, a second, Carl, sorry, I thought I heard it down there. Okay, now, as a whole, is, I'll entertain a motion, or if you want to look at it longer? It's up to you guys. You let me know.
I'll make a motion that we approve, Ordinance 2023-25, with the amendments that have taken place in this discussion here.
Is moved and seconded, we approve, Ordinance 2023-25. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you so much.
We need to recognize, sorry, I failed to recognize that Mark Hurd is not here, so it's unanimous for those that are in attending. Okay, it's close enough there, let's go ahead. And if you go back to the first page, right there, let's go ahead and guess who's going to be talking about Ordinance 2023-27? Stephen, will you be talking about that one?
Yes. We need a public hearing.
We will. Well, you want to give us just a little brief rundown on it first, and then we'll do the public hearing?
Saw my computer too quickly. What one was this one again? This one out in Wellsville, right?
Yes.
All right, let me grab my notes real quick to make sure I tell you everything correct. Okay, so this is a property out in the Wellsville area off of 1600 South. It is approximately 42 acres. The proposal is, it's a request to rezone 42 acres from agricultural A-10 zone to Rule, or Rule 5, so RU5. This rezone would allow the parcel to be legally divided to a maximum potential of about eight separate lots as a subdivision process. And it's important to note that the planning... And it's important to note that the planning commission recommended denial on this proposed zone change. Finding that the location of the proposed rezone is not in close proximity to an adjacent municipality where a higher density development, development is more appropriate. And the recently adopted Cache County General Plan identifies the future land use in this area as agriculture and ranching, which specifies the preferred lane, or preferred land use as agricultural, ranching, rural residential uses, and densities of less than one unit per ten acres. Conservation easements and conserved public lands and agro tourism. Are there any question, any other questions?
We'll have some questions probably after the public hearing, so don't go too far and that'll, that'll be great. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in behalf against on this, on this particular rezone? And as you do, come up and just state your name and then.
Justin Cooper, representing Nick. Yeah, we proposed RU-five. We've, we've worked with the county or in looking at doing a minor, we'd do a minor local road. Two lots on that lower section with five lots on that. I don't know if you can tell where there's a, a grade change. And there'd be five lots on that brow up there. There would be a center section, or center access through the large parcel and that would loop over and end with a cul-de-sac or a dead end on, on the far east side of the proposed parcel there, or the parcels. Is there questions that we could ask or answer on that, or?
Anyone have any questions on them? No? Any other input you'd like to share, or?
No, we've met with the fire department, the road department. They, I think everything should be able to meet standards. So our hope is that we can request a rezone and move forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this?
You move to close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go ahead and we'll go to the public hearing, the Graham additional rezone, twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
So this is, this property is out by Richmond, located along two hundred east. It's approximately a hundred and twenty-five acres from forest recreation, or from forest recreation zone to A-ten. I want to turn on our zoning layers to maybe give you a little bit better idea of some of the discussion that the planning commission had.
It's a lot better.
Thank you.
So as you can see, the property that is under question, the applicant is requesting that this back section be zoned to A-ten. This would allow, it would allow for additional lots, however, it is a little bit difficult to know what that actually means because of some of the sensitive lands in the area. And so it would likely lead to higher density of possible development, but there are, like I said, there's a lot of sensitive lands and hillsides in the area. The one, the items that the planning commission discussed was there's a clear fine, there's a clear line down the range and along the shelf about where A-ten is and the FR forty. And so the planning commission, their recommendation was to deny and their findings were that the area is not conducive to residential development due to the presence of sensitive areas, including but not limited to steep slopes and moderate to extreme wildfire hazard areas. The majority of the subject properties located in the FR forty zone have not historically been used for agricultural purposes and is not compatible with the purpose of the proposed A-ten zone. And it is not consistent with the recently adopted Cache County General Plan that identifies the future land use of this area, mountain, rural and conservation, as well as forest and natural resources. There any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, where the light color turns to green. So is the one whole lot, like I'm confused by all the red lines. What are we talking about exactly?
Yes, the red lines highlight the property that's under question, the two parcels. As you can see, the colored, so the light color is the A-ten zone and the darker color is the FR forty. And so the red represents the parcels and the color represents the current underlying zoning. So the request is to change its back half to A-ten from its current FR, from the current FR forty.
So part of the parcel is already A-ten?
Correct.
Well, no, a different parcel is. That's two different parcels. Part of it, the part that's A-ten has a different parcel number.
Yeah, so they both have the same parcel ID. Yeah, I'll turn off the zoning to.
Oh, because there is a, see.
Yeah, so you can see, now they both have the same parcel ID that are associated with both of these. I'm trying to remember, there was a reason. So part of the issue with this was that. Let me see if I can find my notes so I make sure I quote it correctly. So both parcels are legal as they are located within approved subdivision. The House, Housley Minor Subdivision recorded in two thousand and three and identified as agricultural remainders within the subdivision. At the time the subdivision was approved, it was still and, and still is the currently the case, portions of the agricultural remainder had a split zone with a parse, with part of the parcels being in A-ten and the larger, and the larger eastern sections were located in the FR forty. The split zoning makes it difficult to calculate the overall density. So part of it, when this was subdivided, part of the subdivision was as ag remainders and that's why you kind of see some of the different property boundaries.
So it is, you're saying that's, so that middle line there is not a, it's a boundary of zoning, not a boundary of legal description? Do you remember, Tim?
That's showing the FR forty line.
Yes, I believe, I believe so. The two parcels do go all the way back. So when you look at the actual IDs, whoops, zoomed in too far. So it happens when you don't have a mouse. Yeah, so this one is parcel ID, this is the. All right, my comp, I am really struggling. Yeah, so this is parcel eighteen fifty-three ten. And this one is the eleven. So there are two separate parcels and I'm not a hundred percent sure why our GIS is showing all the different lines. But this line right here does, is at the same location as the zoning boundary.
It's interesting, interesting how it's just partial zoning in one parcel. Isn't it?
Been that way since two thousand and three?
Yeah, we can actually, I can pull up the exact plat and we can take a look at it.
In some places we've actually said.
Generally speaking, I always saw when you, if you have two different zonings in one parcel, usually they'll be, they'll have two different parcel numbers to reflect the zoning in each one and have two different legal descriptions.
Yeah, so typically you can't, typically part zoning boundaries will follow parcel boundaries, but that's not always the case. We can establish, the county has the ability to establish zoning boundaries wherever they would like. Parcel boundaries makes the most logical sense from an administration point of view. However, from our code, you're not allowed to, the most restrictive zoning, if their parcel is split, the most restrictive zoning would apply. And so because these parcels have the split zoning, the more restrictive zoning on these parcels applies to it. So this is, I pulled up the subdivision plat. As you can see, there is a remainder, these back pieces are remainder of parcels one and two. And then you have lot one, or lot one and two up front, that's currently ha, lot two has a structure on it and might have to pull up the actual, the map to make, see what's on the first parcel again, but.
And you're wanting to rezone that when I thought we weren't allowed to build on those remainders?
Correct, so there is some. If they did rezone it, they'd have to come in and amend the subdivision plat to, if they wanted to build on the areas that are currently remainder or ag protection.
Well, the, the report says that there are no reported plans for the property. It also states that the uses that would not be permitted in the FR forty zone are single-family dwellings, accessory apartments, home-based businesses, residential living facilities, agricultural manufacturing, cemeteries, religious meeting house, concentrated animal feed operations, livestock auction facilities, boarding facilities, and topsoil extraction. And I, I guess I and maybe we need to let the, let the public.
Yeah, let's go ahead and. We'll open up the public, thanks for the input there. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone want to speak in behalf, for or against? If you could, come up here, state your name and then share your ideas there.
My name is Michael Graham. Am I okay to use the computer here to show a couple things on the plat? Just to kind of go back to one of the questions that was asked, this bigger upper parcel and this one below the line, that is one parcel. And then this skinny piece that comes down through here, it's actually the same parcel as this chunk here. So it's really this piece and these ones are one, this big weird shaped one and this square is one, and then the house right here is a third one. So the problem that we're having is, so this is my in-laws' land. My wife and I are wanting to build up by them and actually, we're only wanting to go adjacent to their properties, so either right in this corner or off to this side here to the south of them. I'm not sure which layer it is, but if you pull up like the slope, this entire mountain part isn't buildable anyway. Same with kind of farther up here, it's all in the red, so I don't see high density being an issue since it's just, regardless of the zoning there, it would not be approved for it. But our issue is that the plots were cut in half, giving us just barely too little acreage in this area, part of the subdivision, to add one more single-family residence right here, even though we are trying to come below the line. So that's, that's the reason for the rezone. We're not trying to build anything actually up in the NR forty. We're just trying to get enough acreage here, but because it's separated, by default, this lower section has to also be zoned NR forty as far as building, and we just don't have the acreage to add to it that way. And then looking at it before, there are, I think, only maybe two that I found where plots have been kind of cut out of this line and allowed for people to build on the east side of it. But like I said, that's just kind of the goal there. We just have two plots that are just cut in half. And one zone says we can build, the other zoning says we can't, but because it's more restrictive, I guess we have to follow that one. So we're just kind of trying to find an option. Again, we're only trying to build adjacent to this small property here, probably right in this corner. But we need this land acreage to be allowed to do that. So that's the ending for the zoning. Actually, if I can maybe find the layer. What layer are you wanting? Like the slope, any of the restrictions? Me too. Probably both of those. So again, even, even with the rezone, all of this area is still off limits for building for it, which is why we'd want to be in this corner here or here. The rest of it is almost unbuildable, so we're just trying to find the acreage again. I guess any questions for me before I?
Anyone get questions?
I will just state, he has a good point. I understand wanting to build, but if we turn an FR forty into an A-ten, then just as the director of development said, then we have situations where we have to look at some homes that could be built in that area because it is A-ten.
For possibility, yeah.
That's the hesitancy and thus the planning commission had that same thing. I don't know if going back to development office and working on something is a thing, but I have hesitancy of turning all that FR forty into A-ten, just as the planning commission did also. Some concerns.
Question with that, is it possible to kind of take just, I guess since they are the same parcel, to separate the parcels and maybe just bump the line up to allow us enough A-ten to build in this area?
That would be, that'd be a question through development services.
Okay, that would be a separate. Right now it's just for, okay.
We'll hear the hearing as, as presented to us.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there, though.
Okay, any more questions for me along up here?
Okay, anyone else that would like to, are you, you're done?
Yes, I think, okay.
Anyone else like to speak, for or against, anywhere?
Move to close the public hearing.
Moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, okay. At that point, let's go ahead and, let's talk about those. Let's first talk about ten A, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Request to rezone the forty-two acres out in Wellsville. Anybody have questions, ideas, share? Everyone pretty well read the report from the planning zoning.
I listened in planning and zoning, so I have pretty good background on it, so I have no questions.
Anyone else? This is initial proposal, or we could move on it tonight.
I feel pretty confident in the planning commission's recommendation on that. And I would waive the rules and move that we move to deny ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven, the Esperanza rezone.
Is there a second?
Okay, I, I have a question, okay.
Okay, we'll hang on to that.
Mr. Benson, is this right to waive the rules or do we suspend the rules?
The proper language is to suspend the rules.
That'll be fine.
My motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, and I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules and that we basically upheld, upheld the decision of the planning commission and recommended for denial. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes that the planning commission in decisions was upheld. How about ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight, the Graham addition rezone? I had a couple of questions. Is this something that could actually be worked out with a boundary line adjustment possibly?
So because it's been subdivided, they'll have to do an amended subdivision plat. I think the big issues that I would have that I don't think we have fully answered is where there's the ag remainder parcels on it. Typically, those are restricted from future development. The change in zoning would allow them to come in and amend the plat itself so that they could potentially do a smaller ag remainder area. And so that's something to, that's something that could possibly happen, but I mean, I'd be happy to meet with them and see if there's a way that they could accomplish building a second home on the property without going through the rezone. I wasn't here during their initial conversations with staff, so I'm not a hundred, I'm not clear on all the previous conversations. But I do know that's one of the things that's holding up. The other thing for the council. The other thing for the council to consider is one of the public hearings that we approved tonight is for sensitive lands. And that sensitive lands ordinance, as recommended by the planning commission, would allow for A ten zones for this sensitive area to count towards the overall density. So right now, under current code, if you approve or A, if you do a subdivision, you have to, any undevelopable area has to be calculated out of the, out of the acreage. However, the planning commission just made a recommendation that sensitive lands would be counted as part of the developable acreage for A ten zoning only. And so that is something that if this was to be approved, though I don't know how the council will rule on this ordinance, but that is something that's currently being considered by the county right now. That could affect the overall density and zoning of the par, what the zoning would accomplish on this property.
So basically, the landlord has had two choices now. You can, if that sensitive land is used, they've got some alternatives, or a subdivision amendment, there's only one house in there. So subdivision amendment shouldn't be too hard.
Yeah, I, and I don't know that without doing a more thorough review. I know they met with the planning department previously to discuss it, which is why we're currently here. But I'm, I don't know all the, everything that was reviewed as part of that process.
Can you explain the ag remainder to me?
Yeah, so within, within county code, when somebody does a subdivision, we allow them to cluster the developable areas. And so allow, so in an A ten, you, you're required to have ten acre lots, but you can subdivide and you can go as small as half acre lots without increasing your overall density. So if you have twenty acres, you could do two lots on, you know, half acres, but then the rest is restricted from further development. So essentially, you keep the same density, but it is, but you can create smaller areas.
Yep, thank you.
But impeding on that agricultural remainder means that has been considered on those other lots, whether they were half acres or whatever else. So usually, ag remainders have been left alone.
Correct. The only way that I know of to change that is through an amended plat. And typically, you still have to meet the same zoning standards because it's recorded against the property through the plat. And so if the county consents to amending that plat, that'd be the only way to alter it.
So there is choices for these people, some options, so.
This is initial?
Can this be tabled?
Yeah, well, it's, it's only on the initial and it'll come up for next meeting. If we want to talk about it further or decide at that point or?
I think that'd only be fair where we've discovered there are some options for it.
I agree.
Okay, should we go ahead and move on that? Then we'll just, because this was the initial, we'll just let it come back up at the next meeting.
I can plan on meeting with the applicant prior, or in between this meeting and the next and solidify some of those options so we can come a little bit more with a more thorough report of the different options to build a second home on the property.
Appreciate you on that. Okay, then let's go ahead and let's go, I wonder, I s- I see, are you ready? The resolution consenting to the fourteen hundred North Community Reinvestment Project.
Mayor Daines is here too.
Oh, I didn't see you back there, so appreciate you. Let's go ahead and, we'll give you some time to go ahead and explain that. And as you do, just state your name for clarification and, and we could probably turn the lights back on a little bit here. Oh, are you? Okay, I'm sure you are. Okay.
I've got my laptop.
Yeah, yeah, laptop, yes, just, see mine right here.
While Kirk's setting up, I'll just take a moment to thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. As I, we've kind of discussed individually a little bit, we do have this opportunity to create a new community reinvestment project area to redevelop the Cash Valley Mall. It would involve a complete demolition of the mall, new infrastructure, new retail coming in, new housing, a hotel on the property. So again, we're asking, this is just the first step in a very multi-layered process that the state mandates in terms of approving these projects. So this is a general budget overview that we're asking for consent for. In September, we expect to be back with some more specifics on the dollar amount. And at that time, there would be a firm commitment. So this is kind of the next step we need to take in terms of potentially moving this along. And then in September, we'll be back with more specifics. So thank you again.
There we go, thank you, mayor. Council, good evening, it's great to be with you all. Visited with many of you recently, and I know many of you from over the years. So mayor gave a nice introduction, so we'll just move into the presentation. If any point you have questions, something you want clarified, just stop me and we can discuss it at that point. Okay, so we're only going to back up a little bit. So the project area, there's the name of it, as you see on the screen. For those that can't see the screen too well, we're calling it the fourteen hundred North Main Community Reinvestment Project Area. So I know that's a, a long name, but there's a reason behind that. The CRPA is the acronym for the state mandated nomenclature for the area. And then fourteen hundred North Main is descriptive of the location. And as you can see on the map there, that is the geograph, geographic perimeter of the boundaries of the project area. At the top of the screen, you can see that large structure is the Cash Valley Mall. And as you extend southward, there's some undeveloped acreage that fronts one thousand north, just north of the middle school. All told, it's about just over fifty acres with about half of that being the mall itself. So as the mayor mentioned, tonight, we are not asking for a commitment of the county's portion of the tax increment that would be generated by the development and redevelopment activities with, within this project area. Rather, we want to present to you the budget and, and that's already been noticed. So you should have seen that during the noticing period, but we've also included it in your packet. So hopefully, you've had a chance to look at that and start considering that. So we are seeking a consent to that budget. We've presented this already to the redevelopment agency, just so that they're informed. And now we in turn visit with all of the taxing entities, looking for their consent. Assuming we get that, then we return to this agency for their approval of the budget. The pledging of tax increment, as the mayor mentioned, that comes later. That'd be a September meeting. Our plan would be to bring the developer to show you, you know, more details in the project, let you meet them. The name of that firm is Woodsonia Real Estate, based, based out of Omaha, Nebraska. So we look forward to, you know, not only meeting with, with you in this meeting and maybe a subsequent meeting, but also in September to consider that. So the graph you're looking at here, and this is an important aspect to understand, is, and I know there's a lot of numbers, it's a little small, I'll try to explain it the best I can. That yellow line, focus your eyes on that, all the way to the lower left of the graph, that's hovering or that's pinpointing a figure of around fifty million dollars. So just around forty-eight million is what we call the base taxable value of all of the real estate parcels in that fifty-one acre area, both real property and personal property. So when you create one of these project areas, that value is fixed. And that continues, you know, into, through the duration of the project area. You know, forty-eight million dollars obviously spins off a significant amount of property tax. And, and that is shared by the taxing entities. That would continue during, for the duration of this project area. So there's a misconception commonly out there with these project areas that we're asking the taxing entities to dig into their, their reserve funds or their current budget and asking them to come up with difficult to find dollars to, to fund this. We're actually asking for a pledge of future tax increment that, you know, were it not for the project developing and going forward, probably wouldn't occur, you know? So it, it's, it's, it's that that we're looking at is that twenty-year period, which, you know, we're projecting, as you can see on the graph, that red line is, hits a ceiling of a projected right around two, two hundred and eighty million, thereabouts. So if there's any questions on that, please stop me. But it's important to understand that we're not, you know, harming or, you know, somehow impacting the, the revenue that the cash county is already receiving. Question there, Nolan?
So on your yellow line, your yellow dash, you're saying that's a forty-eight million value of the fifty-one acres. I would think, though, that there is separate ownership on there. And if somebody else decided to improve their part of that fifty-one acres, that that yellow line would move, would it not?
That's, that's correct. So that's, that's really the proposition here is, you know, i- if, if we think that those taxable values are going to increase substantially without any intervention, if you will, from a, from a redevelopment agency proposition, then we go that route. If you look at the mall, though, it's, it's been, you know, and that's really the centerpiece, if you will, of this project area. I mean, it's, it's been many, many years since it's performed at capacity. In fact, you know, three anchors are, are no longer there. You know, and I guess that's, you know, getting into maybe a level of sales tax, but the, the property value sits currently on the tax rolls of Cash County at right around fourteen point eight million dollars with, you know, the, really the building being heavily discounted and that pretty much is valued at land. So if you're looking at fourteen million dollars on the mall itself and what it might spin off in the way of property tax compared with a hoped-for, you know, over a quarter of a million dollars of tax value, that the difference, which we'll get to in later slides, the difference in that property tax revenue to the county and the school district and the city is very, very significant.
Have you done a sales tax analysis to compare what amount of sales tax is currently generated from this project area and what it might be in the future?
Not in depth, I mean, we have, you know, done some.
Is it going to be the same, double?
Oh, it will be tremendously increased.
They're going to get the leakage study, kind of look at how much cash is leaving the valley, you know, the valley. So they hope to capture that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, with three anchors vacating, you know, and vacancies right around, I think there's about twenty right in that neighborhood. I mean, you've got significant vacant space and, and in some cases, you've got space that's maybe backfilled with, with non-traditional mall uses, non-retail, which, you know, zero out at, you know, no sales tax. So you have to lift on this when you look at a hundred and fifty thousand square foot national retailer being part of this project as well as another twenty thousand square feet of commercial space in addition to a hotel, yeah, you're going to get a significant lift, not just for this site, but you think of the, the indirect or direct impact that that will have on surrounding property owners that might be our friends and neighbors that own businesses and property there. It may benefit their businesses, probably will enhance their property values. So I think the economic, the economic pluses are several, so good question. Others?
On your little worksheet here, you've got us foregoing about one point eight million out of Cash County. And.
Are we on this slide or a different slide?
We're, we're not, yeah, we're on the, the packet that was sent to me.
Gotcha.
Okay, and it's that big spreadsheet that we see and it's like one point eight four or something million. But what you're telling me with this slide here, that, that's what we can look at, but yet any tax increase changes, you also want those two, right? They will go with the project.
Right.
So our, our base.
Your base, I calculated.
Forgo that much and then any difference of tax increase that we would normally collect?
I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood your question, but I thi- the base will not be impacted. What you're, what you're currently receiving, based upon that fixed taxable value of forty-eight million, whatever spins off to Cash County, and I can give you that number, it's.
We will continue to receive that.
You will.
Okay, it's, it's, it's the increment change from the value change.
Correct.
Okay.
And when it's all said and done, I'll just jump ahead, so.
Okay, sorry to.
No, you're fine, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think your, I mean, your, your current revenue off of that is in the neighborhood of fifty thousand. I've got it somewhere in my notes. The increase will be a hundred and four thousand per year at the end of this twenty-year term. So your percentage increase would be about a hundred and seventy-five percent. So not quite, but nearly triple what it is currently.
Yeah, overall, this is, I think, one of the best, the better RDAs that I've kind of seen. But I'm just kind of curious, is that also twenty years is a magic number?
But also mention the cap that if.
Oh, correct. Yeah, I'll, let me, I'll come back to the cap. Let me just continue forward with something else that I want to introduce here. And this is a great example of kind of what we're talking about here is, is what is that RDA impact or that revenue impact and how does it benefit Cash County? So just in December of twenty twenty-two, so we're talking just last December, the city had three project areas, their names are on the board, they're downtown, northwest and south Maine, that all hit maturity. And with that happening, that heightened or that increased tax revenue that was there, you know, before that flowing to the redevelopment agency, come next spring, when that first installment goes out to Cash County, I mean, that, the school district, their increase was just about a million dollars. Now granted, they're about seventy-four percent of the tax dollar where the county's only fifteen percent and we're about twelve percent. You get the idea that, you know, that really unleashed a nice spigot of new revenue that, that wasn't being enjoyed or realized by the county. So that is the hope with this fourteenth North Main or Cash Valley Mall project, is that same, same kind of concept. Some of the key elements in the budget, we've talked about, first of all, it's hard to read in red, but that taxable value is fixed at forty-eight million. So revenues will continue to flow to Cash County from, from values that were on the tax rolls as of twenty twenty-three.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If there's a increase in the taxable rate, even the, the base value stays the same, will there, will there be, will that increase come to the, to the county then? Like that you're, you're keeping the base level the same, but if there's an increase in the rate, that would generate more revenue, would that come to us?
It's a great question. That's the only, that's really the only variable that can impact the level of tax revenue to the county and it's the changing of the tax rates, right? So if tax rates go down, less revenue, if they go up, more revenue. Yep, good question, great question. Okay, so the cap, which the mayor mentioned, which is really an important part of the budget to mention, that cap for this particular budget would be set at thirteen million dollars. What that means is if development were to accelerate, or let's say there was more development than anticipated or it was realized at a quicker pace, then it's potent, it's possible that that cap could, could be hit or reached before we hit that twenty-year term. Could be year nineteen eighteen or whatever. So it, it really protects, you know, and that's a fairly new provision in Utah State or the state of Utah's redevelopment law, adding that cap, you know? And in those project areas I just showed a few minutes ago, none of those had caps. So that helps ensure that, you know, you're not going to give up more than you thought. So it's not open-ended. Digging into some of the other budget elements here, the first one there on the list is the prod, anytime revenues are generated by a project, ten percent of those revenues that go to the RDA have to be earmarked for affordable housing projects within the community. So it's proposed within this budget, given that this project will develop a number of new residential units, you know, ten percent of which will be income targeted units, that those set aside reserves will be reinvested into the project area. The city's redevelopment agency also has on hand a half a million dollars of existing affordable housing reserves. of existing affordable housing reserves. There's a line item in the budget, those would be invested into the projects. Developer incentives, the lion's share of that being the developer for the Cache Valley Mall. Those incentives are projected at 10 and a half million. There's a line item for administrative expenses that the redevelopment agency would incur. A lot of people, that next bullet item, transportation infrastructure, a lot of comments that I've heard so far focus on 200 East, which we've known for decades would grow in terms of the volume of cars and that sort of thing. Growth is always uncomfortable, I know, but growth occurs and it's necessary, essential for communities, you know, to thrive. In the budget, you see a half-million-dollar line item that, from preliminary indications from a traffic study that is ongoing, we project that there would be a new traffic signal at the intersection of Cache Valley Boulevard, which is 1250 North, and 200 East. So just to create greater safety, more efficiency, that's in the budget. And there's a few other anticipated project, or excuse me, traffic mitigating measures that we can talk about later on in the presentation. Yeah.
Burke, you mentioned the 10% of the units that would be affordable housing. Did you mention the definition of what that affordable housing would be and/or if there would be a timeframe associated with that?
I did not, but that's a great point. So 10%, or I mean, income targeted, our reference there is per definition that households occupying those units would make no more than 80% of the average county median income.
And would they be restricted to be 80% AMI for any period of time?
Well, that is a concept that we're talking about. We've just touched on that as a city.
20 years, but still negotiating that timeframe.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that will be part of the ultimate development agreement negotiated between the redevelopment agency and the developer, of course. Okay, projected agency expenditures, you see that in the budget. It's 13 and a half million over 20 years. Questions are why, you know, and this is a very expensive project. And David, I think you touched on it, this is a much bigger project than some that we've encountered in the past, than any that we've encountered in the past. We're talking about millions of dollars of public money being pumped into this. And let me just enumerate some of the reasons there. First of all, you're, you've got a developer that's buying a property that has not been discounted and will not be discounted. They've negotiated that, and it is what it is. So you're buying 25 acres. A significant part of that is an immense structure that you're paying for. And then you turn, tomorrow, you turn around and you tear that down. So you've got that leakage, if you want to call it, or just that extraordinary cost. On top of that, you've got the demolition, which you see on the board. You're talking about 25 acres of asphalt and concrete. I can't remember the tonnage off the top of my head, but the estimation is, it's way up there. So you've got a lot of expense, you've got asbestos that needs to be remediated, landfill fees, all that sort of thing. Public infrastructure, I've already talked about the half a million for the projected signal at 200 East and Cache Valley Boulevard. Also, there will be a public access easement traversing through the project from Main Street to 200 East, which will create some efficient drivelanes, a pedestrian walkway. So traffic, you know, will be managed enhanced, actually, but there's an expense that comes with that. And then the income-targeted units, I mean, that's an opportunity cost clearly for the developer, where you're talking about a certain time horizon where your revenues, you know, they're coming from not market rents, but reduced rents for, you know, a period of time. So your return there is significantly lower because of that. And that's a number, that's a pretty big number of units, there are 35 that are income-targeted. So let me switch gears just for a sec, because some of you maybe haven't, maybe you've heard this, maybe you haven't. I just wanted to make sure we showed the site plan and discussed briefly what the elements of the project are. What you see there is a site plan of not the entire project area, but just the north end where the Cache Valley Mall sits. You can see that big red block on top, which is for a national retailer occupying close to 150,000 square feet. Just immediately below that, that purple would be an estimated 156-room hotel. You can see there's a red leg to that extending southward. That hotel would be a four-story hotel with the bottom level on that southern extension being occupied by about 20,000 square feet of retail. So it opens opportunities for new businesses, you know, maybe perhaps displaced tenants. And I've had conversation with one of them that has interest in that already. We're continuing to dialogue with our tenants and so forth. Those yellow blocks that you see on the right side, those are your housing structures. So there's four of those. Total units would be, I believe, 346 units with 10% of those being income-targeted. And then that green line, if you're wondering, that's the public access easement that would connect Main Street with 200 East. This is a preliminary rendering. It's kind of a mass, part of a, you know, amassing study, if you will, that shows the general layout. But it would, you know, the future build-out would mirror this, where on top, the top left, you've got the national retailer, the hotel commercial structure to the right of it. And then up top, more on the mountain side, you've got the residential structures. Whoops. Benefits, I've touched on some of them already, that the investment, the Cache Valley Mall developers projecting their cost would be 205 million dollars. Then in the rest of the project area, you could have millions more. So investment's significant. Taking a kind of a very dormant, I shouldn't say dormant, I mean, there's some great businesses there. But you've got about 20 vacancies in the mall, so you're, and the loss of three anchors. So you're talking about invigorating a space that is just operating well below its economic potential. Some traffic benefits, as I mentioned, strengthening the tax base, affordable housing supply, et cetera. The city is, as you see in the budget, it's proposed that we're putting our 20 years of tax increment into this proposal as well, in addition to Cache County and Logan City School District. The city is also looking at other injections of assistance into the project, totaling roughly about $4 million. So we've done everything we've can to put into the project what we feel is necessary. We've gone multiple rounds in negotiations. We get asked that question, and we've had various negotiation victories, I'll call them, but we're at that point where we feel like we're at a point where it's fully negotiated.
So the 20 years, I'm sitting here trying to wrap my head around it. If we look at the start of Cache Valley Mall, because Cache Valley Mall is actually a retail place, just like what we're proposing for it right now. If we look at the life of the Cache Valley Mall, I would suspect after 20 years, that value declined or something, or happened. I mean, I think about Ogden and Wall Avenue where there was a Sam's Club at one time, and now there's not. I'm just wondering what happens in 20 years to a retail space? And what your projections are on there? I'm just finding just some concerns on that. And that's where I'm sitting, because it already is a retail space, and then we're going to throw a bigger retail space in there. And in 20 years down the road, what have we got?
I think it comes down to economic activity, right? If you've got a project that creates lift, I mean, you're going to see property values increase across the board. And I'm, and the exception being state and regional and national economy issues. But just looking at it from a real estate perspective solely, if you've got, you know, vibrancy, you've got a lot happening, generally speaking, property values will increase. So, yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
That's a good question, and, you know, what changes? So in speaking with this major national retailer, they have looked at this as not only a retail space, but also a distribution center. And they are planning to have it be a fulfillment center, a distribution center, again, looking forward at the way we sometimes receive merchandise. So they're trying to plan down the road for, you know, changes that we already know are happening. So that gave us some comfort level to know that they were kind of adding those features to the retail and planning for that. The other thing I might just mention is originally, this project was just housing. The developers came back to us a little later and have added this hotel, which will add more commercial value and tax base to the project. When they did that, they actually wanted us to come back to the taxing entities and ask for the increased increment that they felt like the hotel would generate. But at that point, we just said to them, no, we are not willing to go to the taxing entities and ask for more. This is a, this is a big request. This is by far the biggest project we've ever asked for. So at that point, the city put in some additional funds to help with the hotel in terms of waiving permitting fees, some impact fees that are allowed. And we also put in additional money for the transportation and additional potential relocation costs to help those tenants move. So we felt like we, you know, it was already a very big ask. And again, I think that cap is important, because if for some reason the project does better more quickly, then, you know, the money starts to come to the taxing entities sooner. If for some reason, they don't produce as much income as they project, then they don't get as much increment. So they can only get what they earn. And just another comment, I mean, one of the tenants in the mall has basically a lease term of 16 years. And again, that's Namdar's business model, the current owner. They just, they buy these failing properties and they milk them for what they're worth. They don't invest in the community. So without some intervention, I mean, we just see this going on for 16 years. And this is now the fifth developer that has had this mall property under contract and wanted to do something. Again, it's kind of unusual, we're working with a company from Nebraska. But this major retailer that has worked with Woodsonia, the group from Nebraska, they were doing a deal with this retailer. They've also had good luck getting property from Namdar, buying it from them. So they have those two connections, and that's kind of the nexus of why this project with this particular developer has kind of come along to this point. So maybe that adds just a little more background. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Let me just also add that, you know, negotiations have occurred for who that national retailer would be in that 150,000 square foot space. The city's, or I should say, the redevelopment agency of the city as part of their development agreement, that would be negotiated into that. So it's not just generic, you know, build space and then try to lease it up. It would, any monies, both from the county, the city, school district, are contingent upon that occurring.
This large retailer, we don't, I don't know who it is, but has Woodsonia done any kind of studies as to what been the life of that retailer? Have they been in any place 20 years or anything else like that? So that we have, I mean, we're foregoing tax revenue for 20 years. Then I want to see what's down there or what's after that. I understand that the situation of the Cache Valley Mall is not great right now as far as, because malls aren't the happening place anymore. So I'm just wondering, if we're throwing in a retail space there, I just want to know what's there in 20 years? Or has there been studies of what that particular retailer has been like after a place of 20 years? Do they say, okay, now, just like what we're seeing right now, we need to be at a new, a better place or whatever else? Does that make sense?
I think so. I mean, that, the retailer that would come into this project has a lengthy, lengthy, successful track record, acting as an anchor, not benefiting just itself, but being a draw or a magnet to help promote, cultivate strong economic performance around its perimeter, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, and then does Woodsonia stay? And are they upgrading, I mean, apartments?
They're a build-to-own, so that was one of the key factors that was big on the mayor's list as far as, you know, we didn't want to get too invested with them if they were a buy-and-sell type of operator, but they're-
They're committed to be the owners of that for the 20 years and keep it updated and everything.
We haven't stipulated 20 years yet. I mean, that will come down to that development agreement. That's a key point that I think we'll take into consideration, because certainly we don't want them, or like you, we don't want them to flip this. So I'm sure we'll have provisions within the development agreement that will ensure that if they want to continue to receive that incentive over time, that there's some kind of commitment contractually on their part.
But we believe if they're going to own it, they will build a more quality product if they intend to own it for the long term. You're exactly right.
One of the things I always worry about with redevelopment incentives is whether or not the incentivized business is going to compete with existing businesses in the community? And whether or not that creates an unfair advantage for that new business? I'm just curious what considerations the city has had in relation to that. For example, Woodsonia has been known to work with home improvement retailers. And you've got a home improvement retailer right next door and right up the street the other direction. And if that's what they were going to bring in, and it's just going to compete with two existing home improvement retailers, that doesn't seem like it's necessarily moving our economy forward. So I'm just curious what kind of thought the city's put into how this new retailer would compete with existing businesses.
We always give that thought, and we have here. I guess we, you know, we value our local businesses. Certainly, they're our friends, our neighbors, right? I'd say also, though, given what I just said, that we probably don't take a stance of protectionism, where we take more of a free-market approach, where if someone wants to come to Logan, wants to come to Cache Valley, we try to welcome them. And we're dealing with a site that has underperformed for decades and, quite frankly, is at risk at, you know, running into blight perhaps at some years during that 20-year period. We had this same question come up with Costco. When they came to Logan, I spoke with a, I won't say who it is, but a particular business, and who I thought, if any business might have some impact from Costco, I said, "How you doing?" And he says, "We're doing just fine." Granted, there's always going to be some impacts, but if you run your business well, you've got a good product and you back it up with excellent service, which this particular business does a great job of that, I think you flourish. And part of this is community building, building our economy. So if your community and your economy is flourishing, usually you've got an element of growth in your community, so that that opportunity isn't necessarily stolen. Granted, there might be some immediate short-term impact, but over the intermediate term and long term, you're probably looking at something that, you know, the tide rise, the rising tide raises all boats.
Thanks for considering that.
You bet.
I have a question.
Sure.
The pictures that you showed us in the rendering is all that I have seen. But earlier, you mentioned property that goes down by the middle school. That's the first I have heard of that. Do you have a plan for that? Can you show us a picture of that?
Initially, our discussions were just focused on the mall itself. That's where, you know, that was the initiation of all of this redevelopment idea. However, as we looked at that, and we, you've got some undeveloped land to the south. You've got some older structures. We thought there's a development opportunity, perhaps. So we wanted to, you know, place, albeit a very small portion in the budget, to allow some wherewithal for maybe some, to help cover some extraordinary expenses like demolition, tipping fees at the landfill, to perhaps spring something on that southern edge. Also, the mayor's talked quite seriously about, you know, a potential park in that area. So, you know, obviously, no commitments there. We don't have a funding source for that yet, but that's the vision, at least, would be to perhaps have a hybrid of some new development on the south end with some public amenity like a park.
The city owns two acres.
We have two acres, yeah.
Behind us.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Like, it looks like it goes down Second East. Isn't that where there's that white building there? Isn't there an existing businesses there? Like, do they already own that? Do they, are they in negotiations? How does that figure in to this plan?
Okay, that's a great question, Sandy. So the, Woodsonia, the developer, has under contract just the mall proper.
Okay. Okay.
And Namdar, the previous owner, sold off all those out parcels. So, you know, quick crack car wash, uh, I mean, all the businesses around there are not owned by the mall or by Namdar. They're not being sold to Woodsonia. So those potentially over a 20-year time span, maybe they entertain a redevelopment scenario. Or, you know, the white building that you mentioned in the bridge between the mall area and the southern ground that's undeveloped, perhaps you see some development occurring there too.
Okay, so they would also fall under the, the RDA plan so that, um, the taxable, even though that land is owned right now by Woodsonia, we are freezing that tax base as well?
Correct. And there's, there's roughly, I don't have the budget right in front of me, but there's roughly, if you take out, there's probably about a half, about $600,000 of free dollars, if you will, within the budget to try to dedicate to some future development. So it's not a lot of money. It's between 600,000 and about 900,000, somewhere in that range. So we're taking half a million, which we hadn't originally thought to do, but we saw the need, about a half a million for that traffic signal because we see that almost as inevitable.
Okay. I just want, I just had not heard about that other property and I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. That was a later introduction, so I'm glad you brought that up actually, so everyone's aware of that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Since that southern portion has been added, if a project comes in that is really attractive to the CRPA, would that take away from what was potentially being used in the mall property then? Because we're capping it at 13 million?
Not at all. The, build into the budget and there's a line item that says Cash Valley, uh, Cash Valley Marketplace Incentives. And, well, the long, I mean, the short answer is, we've negotiated that with the mall developer and we don't feel like we have any wiggle room. So we really see whatever we have at our disposal for that southern edge to be just whatever remains there, which is in that range that I just told Sandy.
And the two acres the county or the city owns are right there behind, um, Home Depot?
Correct. Or PetSmart, yeah.
PetSmart.
With all that housing density, we think there needs to be green space available for that development additional for the neighborhood that's nearby.
Other questions?
Sorry to be on the 20-year thing, but, um, as we've looked at RDAs and CRPAs, is there a normal range of time on those or what?
They vary. We've had some project areas on the short end of 12 years, we've had 15-year project areas. We've had some that, you know, are midway through their term and then they're amended because there's other development opportunities. So, uh, we've, the downtown, I think existed downtown RDA for about 25 years or longer.
That was close to 30 because again, we had it for about 15 and then we amended it and added more time. So, right now, they changed the law before you had to declare, um, your timeframe, you had a tax minimum committee, and 20 was kind of the minimum and some would go up as much as 50 years, like down in Salt Lake. Since they've changed the law with a cap, they tend to be shorter, so 20 to 15, you didn't want as short as 12. And I think that was out of the other mall, 12, wasn't it?
I believe so.
So, Woodsonia, I mean, are they the ones saying this only makes a deal if it's 20 years or what's going on there? Where did we come from 20 years at?
Essentially just what you said, yeah. Woodsonia, I mean, as the, the result of all our negotiations, we've tried to trim that back and we, we've, we've had some victories, if you will, in negotiations, but that is really something that's become non-negotiable. The mayor can speak more to that.
And they presented us with kind of their pro forma, which shows an ROI. Again, I mean, there's, I'm sure some wiggle room in those numbers, but their ROI, given interest rates and so on right now, are really pretty low. And if any of you would like to look at those specific numbers, I mean, that's what they're telling us, is they simply need 20 years to make it work, given all the, all the expense that they're putting into the demolition, the new infrastructure and those sorts of things. We, we would have preferred a 15-year as well and we did have discussions with that, but, you know, given the numbers, it just, they said that's not viable for them.
So back to the south end that's added on there, we've got apartments there now. So in all of this, have we looked at the demolition cost of replacing all of those as well? I mean, it seems like we've only talked about the Cash Valley Mall and the parking, but I mean, down in there, there's going to be some demolition too, right?
Potentially, if the owners wanted to come to the, um, come and ask for an incentive. Again, creating these is such a, a process now with the state. Again, I mean, I think we've showed some of you just the timeline of all the steps. Again, we'll be back in September. We've accomplished numerous steps, we still have more to come. So we just wanted to give those property owners an option to do something. Again, they're more local owners. If, if there is an opportunity for them to develop and they do need a little incentive for say some demolition, some tipping fees, it just gives us the flexibility without creating a whole new RDA. So we're just kind of planning for the future there in case that happens.
I'm out of questions.
I guess we'll add that if, if an owner of those properties wanted an incentive, okay. Now, let me just deal with that later.
Okay. So, uh, at this point, we can give our approval to a certain point. Then you'll come back with, for all the, and we hash out all the internal code agreements and everything that's going to happen at that point.
So this just lets us go to the next step and allows the public to understand what's happening, people, you know, so.
And you're just setting the parameters, you're not committing to any tax.
Right.
Just setting the parameters.
Any questions at that point?
I would just really encourage as part of your negotiations that what I talked about, if the, even though the base level stays the same, if we have a tax increase, that we're guaranteed that, um, that tax increase based on the same base level, just so that we don't go backwards more than we had anticipated. If, if that works, that would be important, I think.
Any other? Carl? You better say something, I know it.
I was just going to, just first say, what the base level is, that's the base level of value. So if the tax rate goes up, that would be against that value. That value is not going to change.
Yes, but I hope that we would get the increase, not the developer.
Well, yes, that, that's our base.
Okay. It might not even be anything we have to mention then.
The only thing we don't benefit from is the increase in value and the tax, the tax increase on that.
Okay.
And in future years, in the next 20 years, as things change, that has to be made up somewhere. You know, it's just revenue you would not be getting, but you also may not be getting that at a rate fast enough for the 20 years. So, anyway, okay, so should we?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, just for, uh, my sake, I've participated in this once before and lately, but when do we get a chance to really get public input? We will have a public hearing and that's, I'm sure that Logan City will do that and their school district will as well. When will the county have that opportunity to?
See, September, possibly.
September. That's when we come back with the specific numbers and that's when you would choose to commit your tax increment. That's the choice.
And that's when we would have, we would conduct our public hearing for the public input. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
If you have the option and you take this to action, if you want to make that a public hearing, then it's not required by state statute, but you certainly can do that.
If you want to have a public hearing in two weeks, that's consent. That's your choice. Not required by state.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Other questions?
I would just move to, uh, suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2023-12, resolution consenting to the 1400 North Main Community Reinvestment Project Area Budget.
Second.
Moving seconded that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2023-12. Is there any comments, discussion? Uh, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous with everyone present. Okay, thank you. I guess we'll see, see you in the future here shortly, so. Okay, let's go to Resolution 2023-09. I guess.
Oh, you're going 20 years now.
In the grave. So I'm like, I'm out of property.
Thanks for helping.
And, uh, Mike, uh, input also from, I guess, Taylor, do you represent?
I think Mike is going to be, Mike is going to be doing the lion's share of the explanation. If you have any questions.
Okay. I want to make sure everything's legal.
Okay, so I will be discussing both Resolution 2023-09 and Ordinance 23, 2023-29 to begin with. On July 26th of this year, the Utah Office for Victims of Crime sent a letter to the Cache County Executive and County, Cache County Attorney notifying them that after conducting a review of the Cache County Attorney's Office, Office's use of VAWA funds from fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2020, conditions are being placed on Cache County's 2024 to 2025 VAWA prosecution, VAWA investigations, and VOCA Victim Services Grants due to failure by the county to comply with grant terms and conditions. The letter, the, the letter further listed conditions that must be met by Cache County before these grants can be approved. These conditions include the creation of a plan to ensure that internal controls over finances and personnel management are improved in Cache County. The UOVC is requiring Cache County to pay back $77,916.69 in misspent grant money. A plan detailing all of these conditions must be sent to them within 45 days of the delivery of that letter. The next three items on today's agenda are the first part of Cache County's efforts to meet these conditions. Before the council are two resolutions and one ordinance that delegate accounting services and fund disbursement to different county elected officers. So I'm going to start by, um, looking at Utah Code. This is Title 17, 19A, 205, subsection 1. Except as provided in subsections 2 and 3, the county auditor shall provide accounting services for the county. And then moving to subsection 2, for a county operating under the county executive council form of government, as described in county code, the council may by ordinance delegate accounting services provided for or executed on behalf of the entire county to the county This codes lays out the duties of a county auditor as it pertains to accounting services in the county. Subsection 1 states that by default, the county auditor shall provide accounting services for the county. However, subsection 2 that I just read allows that councils and in a council executive form of government, which includes Cache County, allows, allows them to delegate accounting services to the executive. Cache County and specifically the Cache County Council has chosen this alternative option in subsection 2. Resolution 2023-09 and Ordinance 2023-29, for the council tonight, revoke this delegation of accounting services to the county executive and place it with the county auditor. Specifically, they name the county auditor as finance officer of the county. I'm now going to pull up Utah Code, sections, Title 17, 36-3. This is in the definitions, definition section of this code. Finance officer is defined as the county auditor or the person selected to provide accounting services for the county in accordance with the previous section of code that we, that we read. Notwithstanding the previous section, for the purposes of preparing a tentative budget in a county operating under a county executive council form of county government, the county executive will be the county officer. So this defines the finance officer. Finance officer is the individual selected to provide accounting services for the county, though it also allows the county executive to serve as finance officer specifically for the purpose of preparing a tentative budget. This is the change Resolution 2023-09 and Ordinance 2023-29 make. Under these changes, the county auditor would be the finance officer, except that the executive would serve as finance officer only for preparing the tentative budget. Ordinance 2023-29 also eliminates the title of, of budget officer from anywhere in the county. That, that is a phrase that does not appear in county, in state code as it pertains to county finances. Furthermore, these changes clarify the, the role of the county treasurer in dispersing county funds. So looking again at state code. This is Title 17, Chapter 24-1, subsection 4, in that the duties, general duties of a county treasurer to, uh, include to disperse county money on a county warrant issued by the county auditor or subject to sec, to state code by a county check or such other payment mechanism as may be adopted. So, among his other duties, the county treasurer is tasked with dispersing county money on a county warrant or through other payment mechanisms. These two changes tonight also clarify this duty of the county treasurer. Before we dive into greater detail, I want to stress again that these changes are delegations made by the county council. State code is clear. The role of accounting in counties is delegated by the council. While the council is not without some guardrails in whom they select to perform these services, the choice of county auditor is not only allowable, it is the default office for performing this task. I'd also note that I have discussed these changes with a representative of the Utah State Auditor's Office. While it is not their practice to endorse specific policies or ordinances or resolutions, they were comfortable with these changes, though they did recommend at some point, we, the council define the role of purchasing officer for the county. And I think in, in my, my recommendation, I think the intent of these ordinances is that that purchasing officer would also be the auditor, county auditor. Furthermore, both myself and our county attorney have spoken with representatives from the Utah Office for Victims of Crime, and they have indicated that these changes would alleviate their concerns with Cache County's financial organization and processes. So I'll just pause for any questions the council may have. Okay. So we can go ahead and look into greater detail of Resolution 2023-09. This resolution is an amendment to the Cache County Organic Act. As such, it requires two-thirds of the full body of the council, that's five council members, to vote in favor. Some amendments to the Organic Act also require a, a pub, a vote by the public. This would not be one of those as it does not fundamentally, uh, change the, the county's council executive form of government. It is simply a change that a previous council introduced into the Organic Act by two-thirds So this changes, uh, three sections of the Organic Act. Scroll down to it. And again, I would reiterate, this is, um, this is akin to, to amending the county's constitution. So, um, certain, most certainly should not be taken lightly. And that's why the, the Organic Act itself has introduced a higher threshold of, of two-thirds majority of the, of the legislative body, the council, to amend. So we're looking at Article 4, which is, uh, powers and duties of the county executive. Subsection F on page, I'm, I'm on page, page 11. That is to, so subsection F, Cache, the, the county executive shall prepare an annual tentative budget as provided in the Uniform Fiscal Procedures Act for counties. Um, a lot of the code that we just read, um, comes from, from that, the Uniform Fiscal Procedure. A lot of the code that we just read comes from that, the Uniform Fiscal Procedures Act for Counties. Subsection G. Supervise and direct personnel management and other services and functions of the county delegated to the executive by state statute or county ordinance. And we have, this resolution would cross out centralized budgeting and accounting, purchasing, and other service functions, specifying functions delegated to the executive by state statute or county ordinance. Furthermore, I'm going to go to page 13 of 17 of the resolution. These are powers and duties of the county auditor. The auditor shall be the Finance Officer of the county, as defined in Utah Code, except that the county executive shall be the Finance Officer solely for the purpose of preparing a tentative budget. So this does create two Finance Officers of the county. The executive would be the Finance Officer over the budget, and then the county auditor would be the Finance Officer over accounting. And that is made more clear in the next paragraph. The Office of the County Auditor shall have authority to audit all county departments, offices, and entities, though the Office of County Auditor may not audit the auditor's own office or accounts. The Office of County Auditor shall provide accounting services for the county and have all other functions, responsibilities, and powers provided by law. The Office of the County Auditor shall assist and support the county executive in his role in preparing the annual tentative budget. The last change that this resolution makes is that of the Office of County Treasurer. And this, I would note, is just literally copying and pasting state code into the Organic Act. The Office of County Treasurer shall receive all money belonging to the county, disburse county money by warrant, check, or other payment mechanism, as well as keep a record of receipts and expenditures of all such money, and have all other functions, responsibilities, powers provided by law. So that is the, that's the change to the Organic Act. Chair, if you'd like to just worry about this for now and then move to the ordinance after the vote, or I can talk about the ordinance now, it's up to you.
Let's see what questions.
Or questions, yeah, absolutely.
Questions do we have on this? Questions? Clarification?
I have a couple of questions for you, Micah. The practice the state was upset about in the attorney's office that started over a decade ago. What was the form of financial management we had when that practice started?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
I believe it was the one that's being proposed, that's my understanding. And the next question I have is when that unpopular practice of those extra payments was discontinued, do you know what the form of financial management was?
Can you be more specific about, like, what? When, when, I mean, as far as I'm aware, they were discontinued.
About, about four and a half years ago. The form we had is the one we have now. Curious if you or anyone on the council is aware why the previous council moved away from that form of financial management.
So, all I can speak to is that the Organic Act hasn't been amended since the year 2000, and so I'm not sure about policies or about, like, internal procedures in the county, but what I can say is that the Organic Act, at least, what we're seeing in the Organic Act has been, that is, what exists in the Organic Act right now has at least been in place since 2000, and I have seen the redline version of that change, that was amended in 2000, it didn't make any changes to this, so it's, it was at least since the year 2000.
I wasn't in elected office at the time, but I was a member of the community, and I remember the last decade when the council had a number of problems with that form of financial management, with the treasurer and with the auditor, and there were a number of concerns related to how that system of financial management functioned within the county. And there were, there were problems about payments being made, our average days to pay were 45 days. There were multiple vendors who wouldn't even work with the county because of, because of that problem. For example, the Herald Journal refused to post public notices because they were concerned they wouldn't get paid. There were multiple findings in state audits, and there were, the county wasn't able to produce a financial statement. There were a lot of concerns about this form of financial management back then, which is why the council at the time chose to professionalize the financial management and move into a more modern and sophisticated form of financial management with a finance department and a finance director over that, which has alleviated all of those concerns that existed back then. Have making those changes has made it so that the counties had clean audits, it's made it so that financial statements are delivered on time and correctly. It's made it so that payments and payroll especially are processed in a timely and correct manner. And it's been, I think, a successful change. I think the method that's out there with an auditor and a treasurer is a method that's most often used in smaller counties, and it's also most often used in counties that have commissioner system. We're one of only two counties in the state that have our form of government, and I think that's something that should be considered. I, I guess I would ask a question of the council, and I would just ask you to consider this before you make any changes. Well, first of all, I would ask the council to, as Micah said, this is a serious consideration, it's something that should not be taken lightly, because it is akin to changing the constitution of the county. And so I would ask the council how familiar they are with what functions the Finance Director currently performs, what functions, financial functions, the county executive or executive branch or executive office currently perform. And I would, I would ask you to ensure that you are familiar with those before you eliminate them or reassign them. I think if this is something that council were going to consider, that it's a much more complex question and issue than is what is spelled out in a few sentences in an ordinance. If you dig a hole for a new house and you look at the pile of dirt that came out of it, the pile of dirt looks much bigger than the hole that was there, because that dirt comes apart, it spreads out, it opens up when you take it out of the hole. And that's what, that's what you would find if you pulled all of these pieces and parts out and set them out, is there's a lot packed in there. There are a lot of steps, there are a lot of processes, there are a lot of functions, there are a lot of people performing all of those. It's a very complex change that's being discussed. When it was done this way before, it didn't work very well. Since we've changed it to this way, it's worked very well, in my opinion. Yes, there are some practices that happened in the attorney's office that were unfortunate, but the current system fixed that, changed that, stopped those, and they haven't occurred in four and a half years. I think this is something that should be considered very carefully. I would simply ask the council to think very deeply about this. And just to reiterate, totally on board with doing whatever is necessary to help us comply with the requests of these granting agencies, to help our county to be in the strongest financial position possible. And I absolutely want to work with the council to make sure we do that. And I hope that's the way that we'll do it, is with conversation, with collaboration, with cooperation. I don't feel like that's been the process to this point. I feel like there's a lot more discussion that we should have in relation to these changes. And I feel like, I feel like we really need to work on this, and it's not something that we should just rush into.
If I may respond. Appreciate the history of finance, but we're sitting here with the situation in front of us in year 2023. Not has there been a situation where we've been faced with some grants and some money being pulled away from the county. I think every one of us on the council take that very seriously, and if I ask the council how much time they have spent on this situation in the past week, it's been exhaustive. And so I understand what you're saying and that other form. I participated in a conference call yesterday with the state auditor. It was, it was stated that these things, that we're talking about a change, bring us more in line with state code right now. So getting, and I agree, there's going to be change, and change is going to be something that's challenging, and we have to accept that, and we all have to be ready to adapt to that. But as a council member, I find it scary for what we're facing. I just want to do the right thing for the county, and as a council member, and I understand that we're facing a critical situation here. I'm open to any point, and I appreciate the executive's point. But I believe the past is different than what we're facing right now as far as bills and everything else from entities out there. Now we're talking grants and things that the existing situation did not meet and pass, and so now we've got a problem, and so we do need to make a change, we do need to process that, and we do need to be ready. So whether that's tonight or in two weeks, I don't know, but as a council, we're tasked with that. And I'm, and back to your very, very earlier comments, Mr. Executive, that we threw this report out there, I will say right now, I very much appreciate our HR Director, Amy Adams, I very much appreciate Cameron Jensen and his role. I have no detailed or no issue against any one of them. The issue in front of us as a council right now is to do the right thing so that this county keeps those funds coming in, and we meet that obligation, and we align with the state code and do what's right. That's what I feel so far.
Thank you so much. I just want to say I agree with you. I think we're very, very close on this issue, and I, I want us to move forward not out of fear, but out of deliberate action. And I know it is scary to have a state agency come in and say, you're at risk of potentially losing these funds because of something that some other people did. None of us were involved with those things that happened in the past. And that, that, that's a difficult thing to deal with. But I think the way that government was established in our country was not intended to be fast, and that was on purpose so that we could be deliberate, so that we could make sure that the decisions we're making for our public that we serve are the best decisions possible. And I, I feel the pressure from these state agencies also, that they want us to act, and they want us to act quickly. They, in their letter to us, gave us 45 days, which, if I remember correctly, that was September 9th, that they said they wanted a proposal from us. We didn't have to have anything implemented by that date. That was just the date by which they wanted us to respond. They also told me that if we needed more time to come up with something, they were willing to grant that as well. So I, I understand the sense of urgency, I share the sense of urgency, and I, I want us to move as quickly as we can do the best job for the public.
I, I'd also like to just respond, Executive Zuck, with, just want to mention two phone call I had with the state auditor's office yesterday, and then 20 minutes before this meeting started with the Utah Office for Victims of Crime. In my discussion with the state auditor's office, Executive Zuck, he actually mentioned the same thing you did about what is being proposed here, being kind of a clunkier system that has more moving parts and that things tend to move slower. That is, that is a con, but then the pro is that it provides additional oversight. And that, the concern from, from the state agencies has been a lack of oversight. And, and there's kind of this balance of making sure that our, our procedures are efficient, that it's not taking 45 days to pay a vendor, while at the same time making sure that there are a sufficient number of eyes and checks and balances. And then another, another conversation I had, again, just like less than an hour before this meeting started, with Representative from the Utah Office of Victims of Crime, she mentioned the same thing you did, Executive Zuck. What their expectation is not that these plans are implemented in 45 days, but that a plan for how we are going to change is sent to them within 45 days. And so, I know we've been acting with some urgency, just in myself working with the council, and I, I think that there's, in my opinion, just as your, you know, as your policy analyst, there's justification to pump the brakes. The expectation from the Office of Victims of Crime is that the plan is sent to them in 45 days, rather than anything passes in that time.
Thank you, Micah. I just want to add too, and I know I'm talking a lot, I'll let you guys talk.
You are kind of hijacking the meeting a little bit, so please.
I just want to say that, I'm not trying to cling to any of these functions myself. I have a lot on my plate, there's a lot that I responsible for, three dozen different boards and committees and so many things. If this were taken off my plate, that actually makes my life a lot simpler. However, my concern is what is the best for the county and what would be the best functioning? Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay, other people who would like to share in on this, again, we're talking about this ordinance here, or this resolution, excuse me, 2309.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Chair. For those of you who are in the audience, I'm Taylor Sorensen, I'm a deputy county attorney. The county attorney's office, our primary responsibility is to represent the best interests of the county as an entity. We don't represent the interests of the executive or the council. Our interest is for the county as a body. And so for that reason, we've been working with Micah, the policy analyst, in developing this ordinance, making sure it comports with state code, and ensuring that we are developing a plan that is in the best interests of the county. It's the county attorney's office opinion that this plan is in the best interests of the county. And I would just make a couple of clarifications and points of fact. Weber County, Davis County, Utah County, Washington County, all use this same system. All of those counties happen to be larger in size than ours. In the case of Utah, Davis, and Weber, it's over double our size. So these are other large, very large counties, much larger than our own, who are handling many times more payments, many times more staff, employees, payroll, all those things, and these counties use this system. And these counties have been able to make it work. And it's true that under state code, we can't force Mr. Benson here to go get a CPA, but there are many ways that we can modernize and professionalize and keep this system working efficiently. And as far as, you know, when misuse of funds and misallocation of funds originated, that may have been under this previous system, but it reached its crescendo under our current system. And it reached, and to to characterize that our finance system as currently constituted has been completely blameless is a, is a misstatement of fact. We've failed several audits. The Utah Victims of Crime audit that just happened said that we had weak internal controls, and that there's misuse of federal funds, and that misuse was only possible due to our current system of finance management. And so, in order to combat those risks and those weak internal controls, we need to increase the amount of oversight that we have. increase the amount of oversight that we have over our finances. Creating this system will effectively divorce the accounting of the funds with the dispersment of the funds. The county auditor and the county treasurer will be forced to balance their books under state code, at least monthly, and most likely more often than that. And so having another set of eyes, having double book accounting, that increases the amount of oversight. While it may increase the amount of time between payments, I would rather have a payment done right than misallocated or misused. And so all that to just say that the county attorney's office has developed this language and we've taken it straight from state code and we believe that this is the best way to move forward for the county.
Thank you. Other comments?
I was, I was just going to make a comment, but you know, the, the issue largely is one of having too much control focused i- i- in a very narrow area. And consequently, we, it doesn't have the control necessary. And that's what I think happened during that time period and it's very enlightening, it was very enlightening to me. I've spent many, many hours reading and looking back and seeing what happened. And it's, really, it is a function of too narrow, too narrow a level of control. It needed to be more broad based. And yes, it does create some inefficiencies, but I think those inefficiencies can be improved. I mean, I mean, the, the technology that we have now, the ability to communicate, the ability to put in place expert deputy auditors, for example, that have CPAs. You know, our auditor doesn't have to have a CPA to oversee it, but he needs to have people in place that can do that and can function. You know, a Cameron Jensen could function very well as a deputy auditor and do the accounting for, for the, for the auditor's office in its role as the finance, finance officer for the county. And, and then the payment methods, moving to the treasurer, treasurer. The treasurer should be making all of the payments anyway. They shouldn't come out from any other source other than the treasurer's office. So in my mind, we, we can bridge the, bridge the gap this way and, and do it efficiently and do it properly and put to rest any fears or concerns that the state auditor's office and other offices may have about us having control. That, that's my opinion.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other? Go ahead, Sandy.
I would just like to say, I, I agree with being able to have more internal controls. I think that's really important. As far as voting on this tonight, I, I would feel more comfortable, I know that we're taking the whole finance department and we're going to split the duties and I haven't seen enough detail yet on exactly how that would work to be comfortable saying, we're just going to pass this and, and work out the details later. I would like to spend a little more time knowing how that, I, I think it's a good plan and I think it's the step we need to take, but I would like to see more information and more detail about exactly how that works before I vote for it. I, I would feel more comfortable if we take just a little time and work out those details.
Appreciate it. Any other?
Again, I'm committed to this. However, I did talk to some employees of the county and I want employee input because this affects some departments. So I'm going to ask our council and Mica, based on what you said from the office, if we're committed, but we give two weeks till our next thing, is there any issue that you see go forward to that? Myself, I'm committed to this, but I'm willing to see two weeks and get some more information from the employees so that they're fully informed and on board. But I doubt right now, I'll never say 100%, but I do not see myself swaying from what we're talking about this organic act, especially after I talked with the auditor and heard what his points were and some things on there. We do need to say some changes. So we are in a new situation and we need to be aware of that and I'm committed, but I also want, after talking with some employees today, I want them to be well informed and have that understanding of what's going through that. So council, do you see anything? I'd like a discussion on if we do delay two weeks. Is that fair?
I think so. I would support that.
At least two weeks, in my opinion. I don't want this, I mean, as it said, this is akin to amending the constitution of our county. This isn't something I was told about on Friday that I feel I'm, I'm well enough educated to do on Tuesday. So I need to digest and, and still, this isn't a knee jerk reaction to.
Yes, I think that puts us on a all more busy meetings in the next two weeks because we've got 45 days and, and we need to be there. Council, your thoughts on this?
Yes, there, there is a limited window, like you mentioned, that we have to have a fully developed and comprehensive plan of how we're going to comply with our grant administrators from the state and the federal government. And I'd just like to emphasize that this is not a negotiation. This is not a bargaining process with our grant administrators. We are in active competition against other counties and municipalities for these funds. And at the end of 45 days, that's, that's not a time period to provide objections or provide different reasonings. They've already reached their conclusion and the 45 days is for us to develop a plan of how we're going to conform with their conclusion. Because ultimately, the grant administrator is the one who decides whether or not to give this funding to the county. And that's their sole decision. And it's, again, it's not a negotiation, it's not a bargaining process. This is not how we tell them how much they're wrong or how much we disagree. This is just a, moving forward with their, their recommendations. And so as we navigate that process, I think that we have room to, to discuss and to train and to prep for an orderly transition to a different form of finance management. I think there is time to do that, but I would hesitate to recommend too much dithering. So whatever deliberations you feel that you need to make, I would encourage you to do them within the next two weeks.
I'm committed to have that discussion. I will say right now to any employee of the county who is here or who is listening, please contact us. We're willing to listen and do that, but we're committed in doing what's right for the county and getting this on step so that we have that money. It's extremely important to the county, is my feeling. So I'm willing to say I will go two weeks, but in two weeks, I want to make a decision and get this going forward. So it's on us to do our homework. I think we've been doing it, but that's my piece, so.
I, I am also very committed. I've looked at, over the past several years, on the county council. I, I think some of the biggest issues that I have seen is that narrowing of control over finances. My number one, and I will reiterate, my number one issue with all of this is, has to be for the people. It's their tax money that we're actually talking about. And when that tax money is not being looked over, is being misused and as audits have said, as audits are coming forth and, and seeing these things, we have to, we have to do something. And in this form here, I know previously when they had this, I think there were some personalities, there were some individuals that they had more issues with that caused this to change at that time and they had to correct it. And there was a county council that corrected it at that time and found something. And as I've talked to the previous executive, that wasn't supposed to be really for a, a long term, that this, as things changed and this, but it became just for the long term because of, of, I guess, certain individuals, elected officials, whatever it may be. But I think we are at this point to where, with what I've seen, and I, so I've looked at finances and I've looked into the, how things are reported, how things are done and recategorizations so frequent and so, and transactions and changes. And I'm sitting there going, we need to have more eyes look, look into that. I know a few councils ago, I was really pushing that, that, that the warrants or the, the financials that I received, I refused to sign those because I was not seeing any kind of oversight in those. They were just provided to me and I said, I need, I want someone, before they ever get here, I wanted an auditor to actually look at them and put their stamp on it saying, yes, these are expenses that should have occurred, normal expenses that should have occurred. And I have yet to have that brought to us since we've passed that. We have had a change in the, in the clerk auditor's office and I understand those things. But I think that's really important and I've talked with so many people in the state that they make this form of government that we're looking at in the finances and everything, they make it work and they are effective and they have more eyes and priorities of auditors are increased over finances rather than just, I hate to say it, but some of the other audits that are temporarily done. And that's why I, I am, I am pushing that we also, two weeks, it's fine. Let's, let's dig into this, let's, let's, let's push this, but I am also very committed to have this change made. I, I know it is better for, best for the county to do that. It is best for the, that we have more oversight for our money to the tax people in this, in this county. Now, the employees, I see maybe a change of, of venues or bosses, whatever it may be, but they, they are to be, they should be kept, they should be, they're professionals and they'll make it happen. I've, I've, they've adapted themselves for so many years. They make, they, they know what to do and, and they'll make it happen. They're that quality that we do have. I would like to also get ahead of other things that may be coming down the road that we haven't heard yet. You know, if we aren't, I want to start doing something and getting, and moving on this before maybe something else comes to us and that, and then we find ourselves a big knee jerk, knee jerk reaction to getting things done rather than, or someone coming in and taking control of us. I don't want that to even think about happening. So, but, so I, we need to move on things and so I am also committed in a couple of weeks that we dig into this, I think that would, that'd be fine. Let's, we'll find the answers, we'll get the, more employee input and so forth, but I think we've got the ball rolling to where, in the direction it needs to go. Go ahead.
I, I'm okay with waiting a couple of weeks, but I think we also need to realize the seriousness of what we're facing here. And yes, some may call it a knee jerk reaction to what we, we have come up with in this last week, but there are some serious issues that have been told to us by the state agencies. And we need to move on this. I, I think this change is, is the way to go. I agree with Taylor, this is not a negotiation. This is a plan that we have to get together and present and we have to go about it the best way that we can for the county. And if we want to wait on this for two more weeks, I'm agreeable to that, but when it comes down to it, it's serious, we've got to take care of it, we've got to have a check and balance that hasn't been there in the past.
Thank you. Okay.
And I, I would just mention then that the two additional items, that's ordinance 2023-29 and resolution 2023-10, it's kind of like a domino. So if, if, they can't fall until this first one does. So if we're going to table the amendment to organic act, we would need to table those two as well.
Should we then go ahead and we'll just bring those back next meeting? And we'll do some.
If I could just interject once more.
Yeah.
If you, I think it would be worth discussing the resolution and going through it and having a first look at it.
Yeah, that, yeah, absolutely.
Going through the substance of this ordinance so that next time we can, we can take action on it. Because, you know, when you, when you place your hand on the stove, there is utility in looking where you wave your hand away, but you don't want to leave it there for too long to.
Mica, go ahead.
Absolutely. So ordinance 2023-29, this is a very similar language in this ordinance as to the resolution that we were looking at previously. And a lot of that is just because the text of our, our organic act is, is also present in county code, but we use ordinances to amend county code and resolutions to amend the organic act. So I'm going to skip to the red line version of this ordinance. So I'm looking at page eight.
That's, that's past all the whereas's, right?
Past all the whereas's. Taylor did a great job with those. So subsection F, this is duties and powers of the executive. Prepare an annual tentative budget for the county. It shall be presented to the county council for approval. That's not a change in executive duties, that, that would remain. Subsection G, supervise and direct, removing centralized budget and accounting, but budgeting and accounting, and then personnel, keeping personnel management, removing purchasing and other functions of the county delegated to the executive by state statute. Next section is the duties and powers of the county auditor. So we are adding that the office of county auditor shall have all the functions, responsibilities and powers provided by law, including provision of accounting services for the county, except that the county executive, except that the, yeah, the county executive shall be a finance officer of the county for the purposes of preparing a tentative budget per Utah code. So again, this is, this is creating two finance officers in the county, the executive finance officer for the purpose of the budget, the.
Tentative budget.
Tentative budget, correct. The, and then the county auditor, finance officer for accounting and, and really any other finance officer duties. The office of county auditor shall assist and support the county executive in his role as finance officer in the preparation of a tentative budget. 3.04050, we are renaming this section to finance officer from budget officer. Subsection A, the county auditor shall serve as the finance officer as defined in Utah code, providing accounting services to the county. The county auditor, auditor shall assist the county executive in the preparation of the tentative budget. County executive shall only direct the preparation of a tentative budget as provided in Utah code. No accounting services are delegated to the county executive. After this point, we start to get into some of the procedural changes that would need to be made. These are procedures that are already in county code that, that currently affect the, either the executive or the auditor now and, or treasurer even, and we're, we're making some changes there. So this, it's called elected official department head responsibility. This is really talking about budget openings. So in fact, we're not changing this one very much at all. And, and because what this essentially communicates, this is the case now, but it will certainly be the case even more so if these changes are implemented, that the executive would work with the, the auditor in preparing these budget openings. The, the finance department is a huge part of, of our budget openings and, and it, that would be a necessary collaboration under these changes. And then transfers, these are budget transfers. The consent of the county council, the county auditor may authorize and record an intra-departmental transfer over $1,000 in any department. And then going down to the end, transfers of $1,000 or less may be authorized directly by the county auditor rather than county executive.
Can I, I've had an issue with transfers ever since I got on the council.
Yep.
Can we put a limit on how many times that auditor pushes that transfer through on a department? a department? Or that's open for discussion, but I have an issue with that.
Yeah, that is something that, when we've been putting this together, many of you have mentioned concerns over transfers. My recommendation would be that we tackle that in a separate ordinance.
Okay.
Just because the purpose of this ordinance is just to change the authority to authorize transfers.
Rather than the details, deep...
Rather than the details of, you know, the legal specifics about what would a transfer, what kind of transfers are legal in or not, so.
Thank you.
So then, continuing down, the county, at the request of the county executive, the county auditor may, upon its own motion, or upon its own motion, the county council may by resolution transfer any unencumbered, or unexpended appropriation balance or part thereof from one department in a fund to another department in the same fund. We then get into purchasing. We start to see the treasurer more here in purchasing. So, basic purchase for individual purchases in amount equal to or less than $2,000 for single items, $5,000 for collective value of all items. Departments may purchase items and submit the invoice for payment. Such purchases must be approved by the department head, not exceed their respective budget allotment, unless approved by the county auditor and reviewed and dispersed by the county treasurer. So, we start to see the process that this, that this form of financial management looks like, where the auditor is approving expenses and then the treasurer is dispersing. In the language of warrants, it's literally to execute a warrant, warrant being a government check. And so, that's the role of the treasurer. The treasurer is the one who actually disperses the money while the auditor would approve those expenditures. Moving down, the department head shall file with the county auditor a request for a purchase order, including required agreements and contracts. So, purchase orders are filed with the auditor's office. Next subsection, the county auditor and county treasurer shall review the documents as submitted by the department head for compliance with this title. So, again, additional oversight with both the auditor and county treasurer. We then get into approved vendors. This is one that we had, as, we met, we had some, some...
Questions.
Yeah, questions. We weren't entirely sure how to finalize this. The county auditor and individual department head will approve vendors, but then we are, and this is really the only point in any of these, these changes where the council is really, in any of these, you know, the resolutions or ordinances themselves, where the council is really involved in this, is that we are charging the audit committee to create a process for regularly approving, regularly reviewing and approving approved vendors. So, the idea is that this, this section of code would be replaced by a recommendation from the audit committee. So, this is kind of a temporary, temporary change here. And finally, we have travel expenses, and actually, very similar story. This is kind of a fluid issue, and we may, even if this is the text that ultimately is passed, we may come after it later on. Consistent with the procedures, I think those are just the procedures above, right? Yes. Consistent with the pre-procedures above, all requests for travel to conventions, seminars, and/or conferences must be approved by the employee's department head and the county officer to whom the employee reports. Payment for such approved travel expenses will be authorized by the county auditor and dispersed by the county treasurer. So, that concludes that ordinance. That would, like I said, this gets a little bit more specific than the change to the Organic Act because the Organic Act is intentionally vague, and so, they're kind of rise and fall together. So, if we pass one, it would be prudent to pass the other. If we, if one fails to pass, we would be prudent probably to, to hold on to the other. The final resolution we have is resolution 2023-10. This is a resolution authorizing a reduction in force, by far the simplest of these three, these three items tonight. And this is a, or a resolution that would authorize a reduction in force for the position of finance director in the finance department. This is the only individual position that, in discussions that we've had, that, that has, there's been any discussion of actually removing a position, it's this one. And the reasoning being that the auditor and treasurer are filling a lot of the duties that the finance department head had, and there were simply, the primary concern really is that the finance department head had a great deal of authority and ability to make changes, and what we're doing is creating oversight into this process, and there would no longer be a need for a finance director. So, I kind of went through both of those, one after the other. So, any questions on either one? Happy to answer.
Questions on any of those?
So, I do have a question, and this might be a dumb question, I don't know. Anytime that it says specifically county auditor or treasurer, does that also mean anyone that they delegate that authority to within their office? It's not necessarily just that.
Taylor, what do you think about that?
That's correct. Whenever it refers to a county officer, they can use a designee to...
Do we have to put, or their designee, or, okay, it just, we understand that that to be...
It falls under there. So, for example, the county attorney's office, my office, says that the county attorney's office prosecutes, you know, crimes within the county, but the county attorney has lots of deputies, so that's how that works.
And so, that's where we would probably want to have a, an individual with municipal financial background in the...
That's correct. You would, the process would be you create a position for a deputy auditor who would, then we can, then by state law, to that person, we can require them to have a CPA to assist our auditor in his duties.
Or equivalent experience.
Yes.
Whatever we decide.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions? Good ones. By the way, there is no dumb question.
You haven't heard someone laugh yet.
I actually, I have a question for Taylor, if that's all right.
Yes.
The creation of that deputy, and we've talked about this, and I, the creation of deputy auditor, would that come in a resolution? I mean, I think the council would like to make a decision about that, about the job requirements of, if the council wanted to make a decision about the job requirements of a chief deputy auditor, would that come through resolution?
Sure. Well, there's a couple of ways that they could do it. They could do it by resolution. Our county auditor could make a proposal for a budget opening to allocate a sufficient amount of money, and our council could condition that with the receipt of that money. There's a couple of ways that could occur.
Okay. We already, we had one not very long ago, and so, does that one, because the changes in that, does that change, do we have to then re, recreate?
Every elected official, I think, by default has a deputy, so I don't know if that position would have to be reconstituted, if it's not currently built. But if it is not currently constituted, that you can do that by resolution.
Why get a deputy and send him there in place of me sometimes?
I don't think county councillors...
Actually, I know that it says in state law, you cannot have a deputy.
Oh, man.
Just Nolan.
Yes.
Other questions?
I'll just make a statement. Thanks to the attorney's office, thanks to Taylor, we have fucked them crazy this week, and I appreciate your help and your advice. I thank the county employees, all of you. I, as a council member, want to do what's right. I so desire to do that, and I take these issues very, very seriously, and I want to thank you, and I'm open to calls or help on as we make this decision and go forward to get the county back where we need it and operating smoothly and efficiently. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nolan. I would just like to echo that same sentiment. You know, I spend a lot of hours talking to county employees and getting a lot of insight and information about what can work and what maybe will be difficult, and I just really appreciate the dedicated people that work for Cache County, very much so. We just simply have to say, okay, auditors, this is what you've required, and we're going to do it. And I like the notion of this isn't a negotiation, we can't sit and try and weasel our way out of it, we just have to do it.
I've always been of the opinion that our employees are our most valuable asset in this county, and know that we are open to what, you know, if you would like to call me or whatever and talk about some things, I'm more than willing to listen to what you have to say. So, thank you to all of you.
Well, I appreciate all the input. I do. I think we're, I think we're with this, I still think we're heading in the right direction that we need to be. What other, anything else, any input from anyone else would like to share or not, then we'll go ahead. These will be coming up at the next meeting. You've got a few other business items right there. Please notify Micah any changes, additions to, deletions to any of those. And we'll have some short council member reports, and then, I'm not so sure we're going to have our executive session. Because of, I don't see him here.
He's here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, you're taking that part on. I'm sitting there going, I'm looking for somebody else at the time.
Yeah, this is...
That's right. Well, I, at first, we talked about a different, a different executive session. Okay, so this one's, okay, we'll go with that. Let's go ahead, councilman reports, Carl?
I've said enough, right?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Sandy, then?
I just want to encourage everyone to attend the sauerkraut days in Providence, that's the 14th through the 19th. They're going to do a bang-up job, and they want everyone in the county to come.
Barbara?
On that same line, county fair starts this week, and let's go and support our fair people.
Beautiful weather to do it, they say. Nolan?
I'm done. No more.
Okay. Catherine?
I think River Heights has their apple days coming up here, too. We want to look and include that. They have a parade and events for River Heights.
River Heights Apple Days?
Yeah.
It's usually the last Saturday of August.
It's the 26th?
Yeah.
26th.
26th. Yep, so just include that.
That's the same as Drought and Berry Days in Paradise.
So, we could eat apples and wash it down with some trout?
Yep.
Some berries, something.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay.
Trout, for instance.
Go ahead.
I got a text from Janine earlier. We were supposed to set a public hearing for the 20 seconds, not on the agenda, for the drainage districts. There needs to be a public hearing for that, with a notice, as they were supposed to be on the 20 seconds. We just need to set a public hearing for the 20 seconds, it's not on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda, so can we set it?
I believe Dan still set it.
It's not, yeah.
As long as we set the public hearing, and we have to notice.
Taylor, is that right?
That's correct. You need to amend the agenda.
Well, and we've already approved, we've been working on an approved agenda as from the beginning.
We may just push back the...
We're going to have, I don't, I don't feel good about doing that, do you guys?
Mm-mm.
That ought to be up front.
I'm all about listening to counsel, so.
Yeah, let's, let's put the, set the public hearing on the next one.
It'll be on the first one.
On the 22nd, and then we'll, we'll do it from there. I think that'd be the wisest thing, I, personally, I think we do. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Second, to go into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?